Good morning. I will call to order our work session. The first item we have is the 2017 Transit Bond Update.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of council. 2017 Transportation Bond Update is part of our commitment to give you regular updates on where we are on the various transportation projects. Staff is here today to give you that update, particularly on some of the major projects. There was also an additional question that was asked for us to talk a little bit about West Street Extension, so that's as part of the presentation as well. So this is really just information sharing, and if you have any questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Blair Hinkel and Engineering Services to kick us off.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council. We're excited to be here today to share some information related to the 2017 Transportation Bonds. As the manager mentioned, we're going to go through a few project program updates, talk a little bit at a very high level about our project management approach and our community engagement approach, talk about some project updates, and then finish off with a discussion of the West Street funding options. Before I turn it over to Eric Lamb, who's going to talk about some of the program updates, I did want to introduce somewhat of a new face to you, not a new face to the city organization. Kenneth Ritchie is here. He's been with the city for about nine and a half years, most recently with the Development Services Department, but he's joined the Engineering Services Team as the roadway design and construction manager. So Chris Johnson left us about six months ago, and Kenneth is filling his spot. So with that, you're going to hear from Kenneth here in a few minutes, but I'll turn it over right now to Eric Lamb.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So let's talk a little bit, just a quick reminder about where our projects come from. We originate projects from a variety of sources. Comprehensive plan really is the guiding blueprint for the city, but we receive requests during the course of the year from citizens. We get different project ideas that come about as part of small area planning processes and corridor plan processes, and all of those recommendations are ultimately rolled into the comprehensive plan. And then staff, we look at the system and look at ideas for things that need to be funded as well. So as we've gone through this exercise for prioritization with the city council with the past two transportation bonds, we rank our projects based on a combination of scores associated with the safety, congestion, transit demand is, bicycle pedestrian demand, and if it's within one of our designated economic development zones or not. So we've had two transportation bonds in the last decade. 2013 was a $75 million issue. 2017, which we're focused on now, is a $206.7 million issue. And the city council reviews the allocations of these funds for the transportation bond annually as part of the capital improvement program process, which you just approved the most recent one. So in terms of programs, we're going to move through these fairly quickly. There was a total of $15 million that was allocated from the transportation bond for us to do partnerships with NC DOT. And whenever NC DOT is doing a project in our area, there are certain elements that DOT will not pay for 100%. Sidewalks is usually the most noteworthy item based on their policy. They have a sliding scale for municipalities. We typically have to pay about 50% of the cost of sidewalks. But in the case where we ask for additional improvements, and the best case I can point to for this is what's going on right now with the construction of the Capitol Boulevard project with Peace Street and Wade Avenue. There are a certain number of additional elements that we requested based on the way the Capitol Boulevard corridor plan, and DOT refers to those as betterments. And so the city of Raleigh has the responsibility to pay for those betterments if we want to have them incorporated into the project. So that's what a lot of this money goes towards. We've got a number of projects that are in the pipeline right now. A couple of big ones, right now, we're coordinating with DOT on the US-1 freeway conversion, which is from 540 northward up to Wake Forest. And there's some significant construction of parallel streets as part of that, and so as DOT is developing that project, we're having discussions with them about which streets are going to be their responsibility relative to right-of-way settlements versus which ones that we'll need to pay for in addition to sidewalk construction. There's two projects along Glenwood Avenue right now. One starts at Millbrook Road and goes out to 540, and that's going to widen that to six lanes. And then a project from 540 out into Durham County, which is going to upgrade that to a freeway with new bridges at Briar Creek Parkway and TW Alexander. And so as part of that, we'll have some responsibility for, again, some parallel street connections and some sidewalk construction. One of the new developments that NC DOT has now identified, the replacement of the bridges at Capitol Boulevard and Atlantic Avenue. And if you're familiar with the Capitol Boulevard plan, this is an important linchpin for the second phase of Capitol Boulevard. So we're having very early discussions with DOT right now on what those project elements would look like, very similar to the same conversation we had with Peace and Wade and Capitol Boulevard. So we'll have more information for you on that as that evolves. So with sidewalks, one of the things that was part of the work plan for the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission was to take a look at the prioritization for sidewalks and street skate projects. And so they're just about finished with that work and should have a report back to you sometime this summer. But the question was, should the scales for evaluating projects for sidewalks and street skate projects be tilted highly in favor of those that were directly adjacent to transit projects? And so we're trying to go all in on the implementation of the wait transit plan. Therefore, should we look at opportunities for other capital projects to complement that? So they should be finishing their work shortly. But we allocated $10 million from the transportation bond for sidewalk projects total, pairing that out about $2.5 million per year. And then also $3.9 million was allocated for neighborhood sidewalk projects, and most of those are petition-based, as we've been discussing recently, and we had $1 million in FY '20. So I'm not going to go into detail in these categories. I'd be happy to answer any questions about them that you have. We have programmatic funding available for street skate projects, for corridor and small area plan implementation, public-private partnerships. We recently completed the partnership with the Rock Quarry YMCA. That was $1 million that council directed towards that project. There's still a couple other candidates that are out there right now. Safe routes to schools program, neighborhood traffic management, and then transit-related projects. There was an allocation of about $7 million total from the CIP to help pay for some of those betterments that we're going to see from the city's standpoint relative to some of the transit plan implementation. So a good example of this would be, for example, if we're going to build bus rapid transit infrastructure along Western Boulevard, then doing some sidewalks along Kent and Method, for example, to feed directly into a station would be a project that would be outside the base scope of the project, but would be good for us to participate in. And that'll, yes, ma'am?
Before you move forward, could you go back one slide?
Absolutely.
I just have two questions. On the safe routes to school, I know we had a big discussion of the big one we just approved, but I did ask if we could get a ranking of what schools and what sidewalks, so I'd still like to get that. And as it relates to the neighbor, no, that's the only question, sorry.
Okay, so.
You have one you answered already.
Let's talk about safe routes for a second. So historically, the demand for participation with safe routes has been fairly low, and we've dealt with schools on a on-demand type basis. We get a complaint from a school, we'll go out and talk to staff with the school and also folks with the parents' organization, and then determine if there needs to be a project. So we've done those on a sort of an ad hoc basis. But what we're doing now is stepping back and working with the Capitol Area MPO to do a countywide evaluation of all schools and look at where there is need, look at schools that are adversely served by no sidewalk access. And so that is a project that is underway right now that we're working with them, and we'll have some rankings later this year.
So Eric, I asked that question because in my district, there is a school in a neighborhood that not only has streets with no sidewalks, but also has gaps on the main corridor, the four streets that get you to the school. So that's why I was just wondering where the ranking was in order to be able to answer questions about, do we ever get these gaps fixed? Will there ever be sidewalks related to getting kids to school where there is no bus service?
Right. And the gaps in those neighborhood streets around schools, our traditional means of addressing them is by petition and for having the neighborhoods ask for those.
So for the gaps, it's by petition as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But if we look at identifying problem schools and developing a program for that, then there would be a means by which the city could initiate those sidewalk projects based on the need and demand for each school.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about that, too. I know a while back, there were some, a lot of people on Ridge Road who were interested in the program. Is that moving forward with them as well?
We've had conversations with folks from both Martin and Lacy, and the interesting conundrum there is that they actually have a fairly good sidewalk network feeding both of the school sites. And so some of the conversations have been about looking at whether or not there'd be some mitigations that could be needed to help facilitate crossings on those major streets like Lake Boone and Ridge Road.
Okay.
So that's an ongoing conversation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this point, I'll switch over to Kenneth.
Actually, I'm going to jump back.
Oh, you.
That's all right. Excuse me. So before we got into discussion about the specific larger capital projects and updates, I thought it would be appropriate just to touch on some of the mechanisms that we're putting into place to ensure that our project managers have the tools that they need in order to be efficient and effective project managers. So really, there are two efforts ongoing right now, and they're sort of moving in parallel, but at some point in the near future, they're going to come together. The first is a program called E-Builder, and E-Builder is a sort of centralized project management software platform that is being piloted right now in the Engineering Services Department. So the stormwater folks, as well as the roadway design and construction folks, are moving to the use of E-Builder to manage their projects. And this sort of acts as a central location for managing all of the data that's associated with complex construction and design contracts. In addition to being a great tool for our project managers, it's also allowed us to take a very close look at our project management processes to make sure that those processes are all effective, and also to instill some consistency between project managers. So this is really a big step forward for the organization in terms of our ability to effectively manage projects. The other effort is what we're terming the Project Visualization Dashboard, or the CIP Viewer. This right now is an internal tool, and this is really a database for all of the capital projects, data related to all of the capital projects across the organization. And so I think there are about 35 metrics from each project that are being tracked basically once a month or as close to real time as we can get in order to be able to have consistent access to consistent data for the various projects that are happening throughout the city. So it's really valuable internally because it allows our project managers across the organization to look at their project locations, to make sure that we're aware of any overlaps for upcoming projects. That way, we, you know, for instance, if there's a sidewalk project and a stormwater project in the same location, we want to have one bite at that apple and take care of everything versus having to go in multiple times. These two efforts will come together in that E-Builder, as it's used for project management, will accrue all of the data on a real-time basis that'll then be fed into the visualization dashboard. And then ultimately, while it's a very useful tool internally, ultimately, it will be incredibly valuable for us to roll that out in some fashion publicly so that the public has real-time access to project updates and things like that. So again, more to come on those efforts. They're ongoing, and right now, in terms of the Project Visualization Dashboard, our project manager, there's about 1,000 projects entered into the database today. We want to get that dataset built up so that we can slice it in various ways, and it's useful to us before we actually roll it out. And then just a quick note on community engagement. So the last of these presentations that you received was back in November, and at that time, we brought forward sort of the revised approach to public meetings. We added two additional public meetings. That is the Community Scoping Meeting, which is sort of the 0% design meeting. Once we have a designer onboard, we want to go out to the community, we want to hear their concerns, and then allow the project scopes to be influenced by those concerns from the front end versus waiting until we get to the 25% design stage. So we have the Community Scoping Meeting, we have a 25% design meeting, 65% design meeting. Also, at that point, in addition to going out to the public for comment, we also bring, generally bring large projects to the city council to get your feedback on those projects. And then finally, the last step is a pre-design meeting. Once we have a contractor onboard, we allow the contractor and his representative to meet with the public, put a face with a name, get emergency contact information, those sorts of things. We're also doing a lot of public engagement, not necessarily related to meetings, but there's a lot of communication that occurs, whether it's letters, or postcards, or websites, surveys. We're generally always looking in some form for feedback, and so just wanted to put that out there as well. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Kenneth Ritchie to talk a little bit about the construction bid climate and then some updates on the larger projects that we're pursuing.
Thank you, good afternoon. Looking at the construction bidding climate, so far in 2019, we've had one project that has come through for bid that came in about 19.3% below. As you can see, somewhat of a trend, I think, is we're trying to look at more conservative estimation to ensure that we're not coming in significantly under on the upfront budgeting. We should have some more data points coming up. We've got at least three, two projects that will be going to bid later part of this year, and then certainly going into 2020, where we continue to see projects getting to the construction phase. So now we'll get into status updates on some of our CIP roadway projects. The first one is our Fox Road Improvements Project, which is a widening of Fox Road to a two-lane divided avenue from Spring Forest Road to Sumner Boulevard. The pre-construction public meeting for this project was completed in May of this year with the notice of proceed issued at the end of May and with construction slated to begin here shortly and conclude in 2020. Yonkers Road is, which the scope of this is from Capitol Boulevard to New Bern Avenue. This is widening this, improving this to a two-lane undivided street with a multi-use path. We are in the late design. The 65% public meeting was held in April of this year. Construction is slated to bid in July with construction commencing late this year and commencing in 2021. The next project is Tryon Road Part C from Lake Wheeler Road to Parr Drive. This is the final phase of the Tryon Road widening to a four-lane divided avenue. We are in the final design phase here. Right-of-way and easement acquisition is near completion. We are slated for a pre-construction public meeting in the fall, looking to commence construction late this year with full completion in 2021. The next project on our list, Pool Road. This is from Maybrook Drive to Barwell Road. This is a widening of Pool to a four-lane divided avenue. We are, again, late in the design phase with our 65% public meeting having just occurred earlier this month. We plan for right-of-way acquisition to complete in the spring of next year and construction to commence shortly thereafter with completion slated for 2022. Blue Bridge Road is from Durrell Lee to Crabtree Valley Avenue. This will be a three-lane, three-lane undivided avenue. Again, late design, the 65% and beyond phase with our, we had our 65% public meeting in May of this year. Right-of-way acquisition is slated to complete in the spring of early next year with construction to commence shortly thereafter and construction to complete in 2022. Old Lake Forest Road and Dixie Forest Road, and this is an improvement from Capitol Boulevard to Spring Forest Road. Variable width, street sections, certainly looking, we are in mid-design now. The 65% public meeting is slated for later this summer with right-of-way acquisition to, or complete by the summer of 2020 with construction to start next year with completion in 2022. Barwell Road South is the next project on our list, and this is from Pearl Road to Berkeley Lake Road. This will be a three-lane undivided section. It also includes a realignment of the Pearl Road intersection. Looking at some of the community engagement we've had with this project, with two CAC meetings held, one with the south and one with the southwest in April, a second CAC meeting in early May with the southwest, a pre-designed public meeting was held in April of this year, and the 25% public meeting is slated for later this summer.
That should, excuse me, that should be southeast.
Southeast. My apologies. The Blunt-Person Two-Way Conversion, and this is, just to caveat this, this is phase two of a two-phase project. Phase one is more of a restriping that we'll be coming back to you shortly. The, so this is restoration of two-way traffic to Blunt and Person Street, which includes roundabouts at Delway Street and Automotive Way. Consultant selection has been completed. Scope and fee negotiations are underway with the design award looking to come to council later this summer and the pre-designed public meeting slated for the fall of this year. Atlantic Avenue is a widening to a four-lane divided avenue from Highwoods Boulevard to New Hope Church Road. We are early in the design phase with this project. Our pre-designed public meeting was held in April, and the 25% public meeting is slated for late summer of this year. Carolina Pines Avenue is from Lake Wheeler Road to South Saunders Street. Current status updates, there was southwest CAC meeting in May of this year. The pre-designed public meeting was held in April, and we are looking for the 25% public meeting to happen in December of this year. Leesville Road from Westgate Road to O'Neill Road. This, the proposed plan has a four-lane divided avenue from Westgate to O'Neill. The design award will be coming back to you this afternoon for consideration, was originally presented back in February with a selected consultant of RK&amp;K. During that original consideration, there was direction to conduct public listening sessions to solicit more feedback on the proposed section. That meeting was held in May. We will be bringing forth the feedback from that meeting this afternoon, and the pre-designed public meeting for the Leesville Road project is tentatively slated for early of, early part of next year. Marsh Creek and Treyrick Road from New Hope Road to Capitol Boulevard. This is a three-lane, three-lane undivided avenue. This, much like Leesville Road, was brought forward for the design consultant consideration in February of this year. Also with that was directed to look at a public listening session to solicit feedback from the public. That listening session was held in early May of this year. We will be providing an update this afternoon on that as well. We are, again, looking at pre-designed public meeting for this project for early next year. Rock Quarry Road from Creech Road to Sunny Brook Road. So this would widen Rock Quarry to a five-lane avenue. We are currently working with DOT to try and include this project as part of the I-40 widening. The federal environmental document is complete and approved, and the city has secured funding from Campo to cover a significant portion of the project cost.
I have a question here. I noticed the state has already started working around the bridge on Rock Quarry Road. Where are we from a time standpoint? Because they've, they're starting to clear trees and do work now. Because they've, they're starting to clear trees and do work now.
Eric, do you have an update on that?
We are in conversations with NC DOT about the mechanics of getting this project incorporated. So, that, that work was already anticipated, so it's not in conflict with anything that we're talking about with the scope for this.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to figure out time frame, because I know we said we want to measure twice but cut once.
So, the next project, Six Forks Road, from Rowan Street to Sandy Forks Road. This would widen Six Forks to a six-lane avenue with median from, and so, the Phase One RFQ was advertised late last week, and with Phases Two and Three, we'll complete that widening south to, from Rowan south to, south of I-440.
I have a quick question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we've seen you flipping through all kinds of project lengths, 1.4, 1.2. We're looking somewhere around 10 to 12 million, 10 to 14 million. Where's the 31 million coming from on a project that's 1.4 miles? I'm sure it's necessary, I'm just asking why this, the disparity between projects of similar length?
Well, this one is actually widening the road from four to six lanes.
Okay.
So, it's a significantly larger footprint.
Okay.
And then, the other thing that came out of the public process was a desire to do premium bicycle and pedestrian facilities. So, where our normal standard on the back of the curb is 14 feet, we're looking at a 22-foot facility, looking at bicycle lanes behind the curbs and wider sidewalks. The approach that came out of the corridor plan was to approach this as North Raleigh's Main Street.
Okay.
So, you've got a lot of extras that go into this.
That's just ask, it's just a bigger number. Thank you.
And so, the 31.35 is for the Phase One. The total for Phases One through Three would be 44 million. And then, I will now pass it back to Eric to talk about the West Street Extension.
So, we have been continuing our work on the study of extending West Street. We constructed a portion of this on the north leg as part of the Raleigh Union Station construction, but the remainder to go underneath the railroad tracks and connect it back to Cabarrus is still yet to be done. The good news is that we recently got approval from Federal Rail Administration on our environmental documents, so that means that we're now eligible for federal funds for this project, and that was, that was two weeks ago. Engineering Services put out the RFQ for the design phase of this project last week, so we, that is now on the street. There was $10 million that was allocated from the last transportation bond for this project, and our anticipation is that a portion of those funds will go towards the design phase, and the remaining funds will be used as a local match. And so, the local match is important in terms of helping us try to score relative to our submittals to NC DOT as part of their strategic prioritization rankings.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, do you have a greater opportunity to make the grade if you over-match as opposed to just matching?
Yes.
Does that elevate the scoring?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't tell you how much it moves the needle on a project-by-project basis, but yes, every little bit in terms of additional money that we're putting in locally, increasing the percent match against the federal dollars, yes, that absolutely helps improve our standing. So, as we've discussed this project with the NC DOT Rail Division, this project scored just below the cutoff in the draft TIP, and now, there's a chance with the new TIP that it could, depending upon funding availability, cross over that line, but right now, we're pessimistic about that. But what it tells us is that the project positioned very well, that in two years during the next cycle, we're going to be right at the position for funding. And so, we've talked about some options on how we could potentially accelerate the project. One of the things, as I just said, we put out the RFQ for the design funds for the project. The design phase of this project and the railroad coordination is going to take two to three years on its own. So, the need to have construction money today is not as imminent as one might think it would be. But nonetheless, if we wanted to look at abandoning the process of going through and trying to pursue outside funding, we could look at funding this locally 100%. It would just mean that we would have to either determine some new revenues or take down some existing projects to be able to accomplish that.
Eric, so I'm not suggesting that all the projects are important for all kinds of assortment of reasons, so one wouldn't suggest that that's an option, particularly for me going to ask people for that. But one of the things that kind of concerns me about this, and I don't know how other councilors feel about this, is the fact that it is somewhat that we're predicating this project moving forward on somewhat of uncertainty of whether it will mat, meet DOT's threshold as it got pushed back to, for another two years. So, with the kind of development pressure we have in the district, I'm worried, and I know it's not an emergency need, but I'm worried about the fact that we might not make their threshold again, and once again, it's sort of a crystal ball, and we're trying to determine what DOT's participation will be with us in an area that's growing and accelerating in development without really road construction or road connection answers. So, I don't know what the alleviation for the mystery is, or how we might better look at what we could do that would elevate us to get to the point we need to be, so we don't come right underneath the threshold, but we get up and over it. That's why I was asking, that's why I was asking about the over-matching.
Oh, you're entirely correct, and again, putting additional money towards the project and increasing the local match would help improve our positioning, but any time that you're asking for money from an outside source, whether it's NC DOT, or you're applying for a federal grant, there's a, there is an element of uncertainty automatically associated with that process, so we understand that completely.
Could that, could, and I don't know this, so if I'm asking this question, it doesn't make sense, because all this is, you know, still a learning curve for me, but does Campo have any ability to help with the over-match?
Maybe.
Okay.
That is a possibility. For example, we did apply for additional funds to assist with the Capitol Boulevard Peace Street project.
Mm-hmm.
We contained about $6 million of funds on top of our $9 million that we have in that project, so that is a possibility that we could, we could seek additional funding from Campo.
Well, I only ask because I have, I knew that that was one of the ways that sometimes Campo can look at a situation and see where predicating some money to it can help elevate the project to get to where we need it to be. I just didn't know what kind of, what direction you need from the council in order to maybe see if Campo could be one of those options.
The other outlet that we've looked into is USDOT has the Build Grant Program, which took over the Tiger Grant under the previous administration. We've looked at options for applying for this under that as well.
Okay.
And getting those funds. Now, one thing I want to let you know about is that in discussing this project with the NC DOT Rail Division, they have agreed that if the project does get funded in the TIP or through a grant, that they would be willing to take over the administration of the construction of the project, and we feel that's a very, very good partnership for us, given their experience in terms of dealing with railroad construction, negotiation with the railroad, so they're going to be involved in this project with us.
So, I guess, Eric, what I'm saying into council members is, I want us to kind of look at all the options that are available to us, and see if we can find a way to maybe over-match, so that in two years from now, we don't fall right under the threshold of not being able to get the partnership with NC DOT in tip that we need, based on the kind of development that's going on in the area that doesn't appear to be slowing down at all.
Okay. So, the one item we've spoken about before, and particularly in the context of the work session about the site plans and rezonings in this vicinity, is opportunity for some of the projects coming along to help participate in some of the improvements that might be related to this project. So, there's, for instance, one right there, I guess it's Cabarrus and West, is coming along. It, it's going to be a rezoning, and then, obviously, a site plan. Are there improvements anticipated that will be required by the City of Raleigh related to the West Street improvements?
Yes, and in fact, with our preliminary conversations with the applicants for this site, they've indicated a desire to build the first segment of this, much in the same way we did on the north side relative to the Raleigh Union Station construction. So, that would, that would help us in terms of moving the ball forward. Part of the advantage for them is as the road dips down from Cabarrus Street, it allows them for some subgrade access into parking decks for them.
So, is that the Z819 project?
I don't know the zoning number, I'm sorry.
Well, is this the project where CASA and Urban Ministries is, or is it on the west, east side or west side of West?
This is a different project.
Which one? Which one are we talking about contributing that improvement?
This would be the project between DuPont and West and Cabarrus.
Okay, so that's the one that's on the Clancy side.
Clancy Thays property, thank you.
Okay, all right. So, so I'm just, yesterday, talking to folks who were talking about a rezoning on the southeast quadrant. It's right there.
Okay.
Is it anticipated that they'd be participating in the improvements related to West Street as well?
Probably not. There's not a physical relationship. The grade of Cabarrus Street wouldn't be changing with this project, so really, it's only for the properties that are directly adjacent on each side of the project. If that, if that property is across the street, then there's no physical relationship there.
Okay, so the property directly on the east side is, is that NCRR, where the old train station used to be?
That's correct.
Okay. So, the property that I just mentioned, which is Z819, that one might be involved in improvements to West Street a block further down?
That would likely be the case.
Okay, all right. Okay, now, so you mentioned railroad coordination taking two to three years, and that's just negotiating with NCRR?
They, because of the fact that they, they own the main line through here, and these would be new bridges on their system, it is very much a mother may I process for us to create those new bridges for them.
Gotcha. Okay, all right, thank you.
Any questions?
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you all.
Go forward, find funding.
Do our best, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. City Manager, we have...
Yes, thank you. This, the second item today, and we appreciate the opportunity to sort of link these things together, there's obviously a relationship, is an additional update on the request from the council to look at options to revise the street map as a part of the comprehensive plan. You may recall, there was a work session discussion in March, and council asked the staff to go and bring back some additional options, so this is a follow-up to that, and we would certainly appreciate any feedback or guidance you may have on how you may wish to proceed. So, Mr. Michael Moore from Transportation is here to give you the update.
And I recognize I'm the only thing standing between you and lunch, so I'll endeavor to move through this quickly, so. We'll really go through a little bit of background today, and then talk about some of the options we discussed, just so we can do a little bit of level-setting here, and then, we have some suggestions, some ideas about how council might move forward if they so desire. So, again, back in March, council referred the comp plan to Planning Commission and asked them to review that based around five themes, which are all listed here for you. The coordinating land use and transportation theme had included revisions there for the weight transit plan, there's some heavy revisions around the T2 map, the planned transit facilities, and also around the bike facilities map, T3, which is based on the bike Raleigh plan. And there were also some updates there related to transit, bike share, some emerging technologies policies around rideshare, autonomous vehicles, some things like that. What was not included in that was the T1 street map, that was not included in that revision. And then, we came back and had, again, shared some thoughts about that back at that March 2nd, March 12th work session. Just as a refresher, the street map gets updated periodically as we do corridor and small area plans. Those are kind of done as we kind of go through the process. When we look at the street map update too, there's just a few other things, just for clarity, we're not going to look at either, which include like cross-sections and frontage standards, UDO requirements, those are all somewhere else. This is really just, again, kind of the blueprint for what we would have for the street network going forward. And then, lastly, just again, for clarity, it's not really a prioritization process like we talk about for spot or tip. This is not ranking projects, the pieces of the plan as to what goes forward first, there's a prioritization project on that, that we would use for grants and bonds going forward. But again, this is really kind of like the blueprint about what we would have in that street network going forward. So, what are some of those drivers that kind of institute these changes to the plan? And again, we've got those area and small area plans, the corridor plans, there are certain policy adoptions like complete streets, and then, we just have those, those pieces that come from private development, extensions with subdivisions, extensions out to new development sites, et cetera. And with that comes sort of pros and cons to that. There's some disadvantages in that it's a little more ad hoc, it's not this big lift to do this overall kind of comprehensive intentional review of the system, and it could take, you know, a long time to address everything that we have there. The advantage is that it's immediate, we get to have people engaged around that, around things that matter to them in their community, so it does have the opportunity to consider development, and again, align with some of those community values that are present at that time. So, to our March 12th session, we had shared with you that if you wanted to look at the street plan, you might look at it in three ways, and that was sort of a comprehensive, again, that sort of big lift approach that we had talked about. There might be a way to break that down into some smaller pieces and components, and that would be maybe through some geographic areas. That has some advantages and some disadvantages, it's more incremental, it can be a little challenging, depending on how big, you know, if it's only two areas, that's not a whole lot different than doing the whole city at one time, it's, you know, just two. It may be a little more removed from the community, kind of like those big broad plans are, sometimes it's hard to get, get interest and participation around those approaches. There was a third option that we suggested, and that was, we would look at this on sort of a, a street classification basis, so we could look at it, for example, for all six-lane roads. So, it's very fine, very fine-grained, very immediate, a lot smaller and more incremental. Because of that, it could be a little bit abstract for people to want to be engaged around, but, and it could leave some of these corridors kind of open for a period of time. Council asked us to look at another way, possibly to look at that, and we had gone back and said, well, what have we created sort of subsets of subsets? So, if we took these broad geographic areas, and then, we looked at the street classifications or the characteristics and combined those, we, we kind of come up with this hybrid approach, where we would look at the subsets of street classifications within geographic regions. So, that's going to lead us to a few questions that we have here today about how we would go forward with this, if you want. There's some advantage to this, it's more comprehensive, it's still corridor-focused, we can still get people engaged around it because it's more directly addressing their communities. It's possible that we could do, if this approach is acceptable and works, that we could put it on a regular rotation, so every other year, we come around with an update for this, so we would be able to update components more regularly than we do on just a, a, a once every 10-year, or one every five-year basis. There is a little bit of challenge here in maintaining some continuity and maintaining the kind of comprehensive look at land use that you have there. Continuity across how we split the geographies, I mean, for example, a Tryon Road might cross multiple boundaries of the sort of subdivisions we have. How we make sure that we maintain continuity for that over time is something that staff would have to be particularly conscious of as they go forward and prepare the review. So, if we were to take that approach, where we're going to use, again, the sort of street segments or street classifications within small geographic boundaries, there's certain things that we want to consider, just how far down on that sort of list of streets do we want to go? Do we want to look down at four-lane dividers, or are we mostly concerned about streets that are subject to change? The six-lane divided, the ones that are multi-way boulevards, street extensions, just, again, how fine in the grain do we want to get into that approach? Second big question we would have is, what, how many geographic units do we want to look at? We could do that by council districts, we could do that by leaf zones, we could do that by saying everything inside of 440 we might look at, because it sort of has a built-out character and very similar kind of characteristics to the street network. Then, we could expand and say everything between 440 and 540, it might be more subject to change, and it's sort of a different approach. We may want to subdivide that into two to four different zones, and then, look at everything outside of 540, that might be an approach that we look there. We just have to look at that and balance that against resources that we would have there. And then, the last consideration I'd ask you to have here is just what other policy discussions would we want to have around that? Are there new extensions or alignments that we need to be considering, different street classification types that we don't have in the, in that approach? And then, what other kinds of investments would we want? For example, big in our industry right now is a conversation about Vision Zero. That's this very, very high goal of zero fatalities in transportation, in transportation network. Is that something that we would want to consider as part of the approach? So, this map is washed out a little bit, but this is just an example for discussion. This would divide Raleigh into five zones. This kind of tries to pick up major quarters, and it kind of follows our leaf zones that we have there, so this is kind of like a collection of two to three leaf zones around. And again, more as an illustration and less of a proposal, but just so you could think about how that might actually work. Other items, if you want to pursue with this, would be just what other responses do you, what other criteria might be important for us to prioritize this? So, typically, the look for this particular approach to street plan updates is we've looked at travel demand in areas of looked at travel demand and areas of future growth. What other pieces would we want to add to that as we kind of go forward? So, our ability to impact modal splits, basically to improve transit ridership. Are there criteria that we would want to look at and incorporate into that? Into Vision Zero, to look at, again, accessibility, not necessarily just mobility, but accessibility, your ability to connect to things and goods and services in your community, network connectivity, what other pieces there might you want to consider as we move forward? So, again, if council wishes to proceed, what we, what we can do is go back and look at this based on your feedback and prepare a plan that sort of lays out an approach. And from that, I'd kind of, we'd kind of need to hear about how many zones we'd want to consider, and again, how fine-grained in the street network we would look at. We can prepare a plan and bring that back to you, probably in September, October, in that timeframe. And we can then also try to put some resource requirements to it. It's hard to do that until we know if we're talking about 10 zones or five zones at a time, so.
Michael, I have a question for you on Vision Zero. I don't know a lot about it, so just a quick question. So, does Vision Zero not just look at conflicts, but it, does it also look at what some of these other modals that aren't here yet, that are coming, that we would identify as for the, for the, in terms of having the right resources or prospective street grids that would meet the demand of whatever these new means of mobility may be?
It does try to anticipate that. It has a big component of that is sometimes in technologies and with the investments that you would make in technologies, particularly around like driverless cars, the autonomous vehicles. So, how you would incorporate that into a plan? The update addresses some of that on a very early level, but as we were to do more updates, we could, we could delve into that much, much more deeply. But it does try to anticipate those kinds of approaches. The Vision Zero is just, again, again, a very lofty goal of zero transportation fatalities across the board, across all modes, across all splits.
I can't imagine anyone not wanting that, but I just wanted to make sure that we are looking at all the modes that we don't yet see, but they're anticipated out there, so we're addressing some of those.
Question, when we talk about major streets and four-lane divided and four-lane parallel, are we looking at those that are planned to be four-lanes, or is it existing four-lanes?
We could look at them either way, how you would proceed, want us to proceed with that. So, in the plan, we could also look at what streets are just subject to change. That would be a very, a very fine, a kind of grain approach, and it may be the one that's most direct and most immediate, and that we could move through most quickly, just again, depending on area. So, that's, that's all for our discussion, so.
Okay.
Well, I personally have concerns about the future plans for so many six-lane highways in the city. So, I definitely would want to review the six-lane, the proposed six-lane highways, whether they're divided or whatever. So, that would be one of my concerns. The other consideration that I'd like to take into account are the impacts of roads outside of the city. And so, for example, in the northeast, future widening of NC 98, for example, and, and the future widening and improvements to Capitol, US 1, north of 540. I think, and Capitol itself, from 540 to 440, all of those, I think, need to be taken into consideration as well.
Certainly.
So, I appreciate your work on this. It is a heavy lift, and, but what I'll say is, having been around when we did our original comp plan for sustainable growth and development, we did set a goal that we would move away from car-centric development to, rather than moving cars and storing cars and so forth, to moving people. And that said, many of the assumptions about mobility improvements are 10 years out of date when we didn't have a wait transit plan, and, well, a desire to live a more compact, walkable, urban, transit-oriented lifestyle wasn't there either. So, I, my criteria would, well, basically, I want to make sure that we're directing our mobility investments to our long-term goals. So, that is to say, don't plan to continue to do road widenings as if that is going to meet our mobility needs in the future, because it won't. We just can't widen the roads that much. In terms of where to focus, I would say, let's start with a, we think the growth pressures are the greatest, and in combination with where we see the opportunities to provide mobility alternatives to meet that pressure. But certainly, I think, a conversation I've had with the planning director, this sort of gets us into a broader conversation about if our community values are with us on this, and do we really have the mobility tools at our disposal to meet those values? Obviously, we've got to meet the current needs of our, mobility needs of our citizens today as well. But I just look forward to approaching it in a way that does say, let's make sure that we're meeting our long-term mobility needs, not for today or tomorrow, but for a time when we have many more mobility options, and that the technique that you think is the best way to get there, I'm all ears.
Any other, I have some comments, but any other comments?
You know, I just think, yeah, thank you, Michael, for this presentation. It's a lot of information and things to think about. I would like to have additional time to consider this and maybe take it up again after our break.
Yep. Sounds good.
Okay. So, what I kind of just heard is we want to digest this a little bit more so that we're clear on the direction we give, and then, once we give that, then you'll be able to, I think, come back again with, based on the information we provide. That's, is that what I'm hearing from other council members?
Well, no, I'm, my comment is that I think you've framed it up well. I think we've heard comments here that are not inconsistent with you taking a next step into saying, here's, you know, maybe two, three options for proceeding, because since it is such a complex subject, I'm not sure how we as individuals are going to continue to evaluate it at this level, not seeing a little bit more detail about how you might propose organizing the analysis and the work.
So, council. Thompson, do you, what I'm hearing, because originally, I thought Councilman Stevenson was saying more time as well, but it sounds like, no, he's ready to give direction, based on the comments that were made today. But I heard you say you needed more time to consider.
Russ, I don't think six weeks we're talking about would be unreasonable to give us more time.
Again, if during those six weeks, you're going to come to some more detailed direction to staff?
Yeah, I think it's not just me. I think there's.
Well, see, I feel like, I'm ready to ask them what, okay, if this looks like a good idea in general, how would you propose, rather than us trying to give some more detailed guidance right now?
Russell, yes, for clarity, so I think I'm just misunderstanding what you're asking for. So, you're suggesting, and none of us disagree, that this is a good presentation. What you're suggesting is that you would like them to take these suggestions, and there's many, without direction from us on how we might prioritize them and come back with some kind of presentation on how to move forward?
Yeah. I mean, what are your ideas, given these, this kind of hybrid idea? What are your ideas for the best way to direct and prioritize our resources to achieve our long-term mobility?
Yeah, I think we, they're asking us to provide that information.
Right.
They're asking us what direction, based on, you know, what we're hearing and what we're seeing. They're asking us to, because there's a lot here. There's a, there's a leaf zone, if we just look at units, there's a leaf option, there's a district option, there's inside the belt line, there's outside the belt line, there's outside 540, you know, they're asking us, how do we want, feel they should prioritize it? So, they're asking us for that, and what I'm hearing you say is, look at them all and tell us.
Well, no, that's not entirely what I said. I said, look where the growth pressures is, growth pressures are, and look where, at the same time, where we have the most likelihood of being able to provide new mobility options to, so that we can, instead of six-laning a road, we can, you know, take that same money and provide better transit options in that area, but, I mean, that's.
So, Mr. Stevenson, I think all those things are important. I think what I'm hearing from Mr. Thompson, and perhaps other people here who haven't said anything, is that there's a lot of material, and how should we move forward? Maybe we need a little time to clarify, so we give clear direction to Michael and his team on where we want him to put priorities first, second, and third, because there are a lot of options here, and I don't think anyone today, certainly not me, can say, well, I think number two is better than number one. I mean, it's the first time.
All right. And one thing I know I want to consider is when we look at future, like our current, you know, Flume has roads that haven't been built yet that we said, hey, I want to know, some of those make sense, you know, you know, and I need a little more information. So, what I'm hearing from at least three councilors is that we need a little more time before we can give staff clear direction.
All right. So, in six weeks, everybody's going to have a?
In, in the time that we need.
Analysis and ready to?
Well, in the time we need, we'll have what we need to give staff direction. Okay.
Could you, though, in that six weeks, could staff also come back with some, maybe some estimates about the resources they would need if we did divide it into, take a hybrid corridor and regions approach and divided it by district?
We could take a look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, that would, that would give us something more concrete to consider, I think.
Anything else? Thank you so much. Thank you all. City manager, anything else? All right. This work session is adjourned.